Slots away from their parking options.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
It's the Art Center, people at the Art Center that called me.
That made the request.
Asking for something to happen here. They're very, and by the way, they're very pleased that action has been taken so quickly.
The other, one more point, there is another place in the neighborhood that's Lafayette and Broadway that when turning onto Broadway from the south part of the intersection that seems to have frequently some vans and trucks parked near the corner that makes it difficult to see the westbound traffic on Broadway. So that's, I've always seen cars, and we do have a pedestrian crossing signal there, and I've always seen cars creep out, creep out, and creep out because they can't see the coming traffic, so.
Michelle? I would just like to say in general along Broadway, this very thing that has been done here, I think would solve a load of pedestrian issues because you're limiting the number of cars that can creep towards the end, which means the car can better, the moving car can better visualize the intersection and the pedestrian at the intersection. And this is, this would be what I'd advocate on Broadway to begin with, is that in the direction the car is moving, that spot closest to the end disappears for parking. Then it may, means that as you're there, you have a better visualization of the traffic stepping immediately into your bike or pedestrian, immediately into your range of your car. So I mean, I would want to look at it for all of Broadway, honestly, but certainly Lafayette is a problem.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
I think it was last year, last year or the year before, the city did peel back the parking on Main Street because that was a problem, the same, the same situation where people couldn't see out around the, around the parked cars well enough. So, and the pedestrian safety committee at Winona State is discussing that technique, suggesting that technique be used elsewhere as well.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious?
Item 3.6 is a request vacation of the northerly portion of Chestnut Street. This would be to set the public hearing for Monday, December 17th. So moved. Second?
Motion by Michelle, second by Pam. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious?
Item 3.7 is the extension of the Wesley United Methodist Church parking lot lease for 2019. I make a motion to approve the attached resolution. Second, Beth?
Motion by Michelle, second by Pam. Discussion. George?
What is the cost on this? I did not see that in the agreement.
Four thousand nine hundred.
Mayor Council, the agreement has four thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-five cents paid in two installments, so that's twelve price.
Okay. And that's for two parking stalls.
For two, it's for a lot.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Just a comment I will be abstaining. Okay? One abstention. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay. Curious? One abstention.
Item 3.8 is Prairie Island Campground Front Porch Management Report.
Good evening, Mayor Council. As per the agreement that Jamie and Anne are here from Front Porch Management to present on this last season of the campground.
Okay.
Turn it over to them.
Good evening, Mayor Council. So we're here. We survived. Yeah, so as we, we're going to try to go through tonight about some of the successes, certainly go through some of the financial things that we ended the year with. And I'm going to start it off with thanking our left click. There you go. I want to start off by thanking you, council members, for your confidence in us to take over the campground. And hopefully we'll show you that we had a good year and that things went well, and there's a lot of ideas and progress moving forward. I also want to say thanks to folks in the departments here at City Hall and within the city, Marty Mullins. Park maintenance has been a phenomenal partner for us this year. Marty and his crew were always there to help us when we needed, and I appreciate their help and us to use some of their equipment and start to make progress down there. My bigger staff, they came down, chip sealed our roads this year, got it done, just like that. So that was one of those. Chris Kramer, the tree crew, as you all know, are some of the busiest folks in town. And as we'll get into, have removed about three hundred trees at the campground due to things that, reasons, chemical ashbore and others. Engineering, especially Jeannie Franz, she's been a great partner in helping us do map stuff. Planning inspections, Carlos, Great Carol, I've got to deal with them in the buildings and other things. City staff, the park and rec department have, of course, this is in their departments who we work with. And I truly can't say enough about how accommodating and helping they have been. And Chad and Ross, and Russ, and everybody else in that department. Ross Green has been right by our side the whole time. He's been a phenomenal partner, great ideas, very thoughtful, and has really helped us facilitate and work our way through this first year, and we truly, truly appreciate them. Gentleman who works at the campground, Daniel Juskowski, he's a city employee, part-time, seasonal, does the work of three people. He's phenomenal. He's a super, super rock star down there. Really, the place would not, we wouldn't have accomplished a fraction of what we did without Daniel's help. Winona State's Eric Barnard and Mike Henderson, assistant directors for their partnerships in our equipment, which we'll talk about. There's a lot of them. It's been a phenomenal collaboration year, but I feel it's important to state them. SHIP, statewide health improvement partnership, we received some grants, you're going to hear about those, amazing program that really helped a lot. Live Well in Winona, Janika Sobek and Deb McClellan for facilitating those grants. All the volunteers, people that just came down and helped us this season was, again, things we just couldn't have accomplished without them. And just the Winona community as a whole for supporting us and making Winona a great place to live and be, so. All right, we'll get into the guts of the program here. So here's the number that, you know, we were chasing all year was to try to make these numbers come out impressive, and I think they were two hundred seventy-eight thousand and thirteen dollars in sales, which is a five point eight percent increase over 2016, which was the high watermark for the campground historically. And then a hundred ninety-seven thousand three eighty-nine is what went, was the city's allocation, take of that number, which is a seven point four percent increase, which I think is a pretty significant number. That's over fifteen thousand dollars more into the city account than before. And this second, and this last number, sixty-six percent, the reason I want to point this out, short-term sales in the campground, that's non-seasonal sales, is eleven percent increase over last year, and I know that because Mr. Hoesley told us the percentage that they have. And why I think this is important, this number, means that we actually brought more unique individuals into the campground, we stayed there short-term, so we're, that more people are experiencing the campground as a whole. I think that's really important going forward, that we get them, more unique individuals into the place. To lay it out, we had a shortened season because of snow in April, couple different snows in April, so the campground didn't open until close to the end of April. Just kind of a layout of how many sites we have, some of our occupancy rates. As you can see, the electrical site as a whole is a pretty, pretty busy place. That's a, that's a pretty high mark, I think. The short terms at forty percent, I think we have a little bit of room to do some growth there, and we'll talk about that. And the non-electric, I think we have a ton of opportunity for growth in that part of the campground, so. And this is, I kind of want to point out, just doing a little bit of history, looking at the numbers, Prairie Island since ninety-five has put nearly two point six million into city allocation, broken down into that one point eight, went into operating funds at the city, and that seven hundred twenty-two thousand paid for the shower house building. That's the repayment amount that was paid, I believe, to the core, R2, the port. And I think another really cool, impressive number to me is since in the last six years, it's been over a million dollars, has come back to the city out of Prairie Island. So there's, there's an awful lot of revenue being generated, and I think there's still a lot of potential to make those numbers better. I'm going to hand it over to Anne, she's going to talk to you about some of the other things going on down there.
Numbers are great, but, good evening, Mayor Council. I'm going to take a moment just to share some noteworthy accomplishments at Prairie Island Campground. First of all, with the support from city engineering, naming Jeannie Franz, we're able to lay out, do some new layout at the campground. Also, from that layout, we then were able to plot points using GPS, and that led to the creation of an interactive map that we used in our new website, an online reservation system. And as you can see, some of, there's a, just a couple screenshots from that website. The new website, the data, the analytics from our website this year show that there were about eighteen thousand unique visitors to our site, and that from those unique visitors, they didn't just come to that entry page, they actually, there were about forty-nine thousand unique views, which means that the visitor came to the site and then they clicked, you know, twice. We also had some improved social media presence this year. We really shared a lot of the events that were happening from at Prairie Island Campground, as well as anytime there was a unique person, you know, paddling from the headwaters down in New Orleans and the South Estuary Campground, we shared those stories on social media, which hopefully, I think we have five hundred and four followers so far, which shows that there's, those folks are following what's happening on a regular basis. And just something about our, our website, just the website alone, we really feel speaks to our users, and that people more and more are managing their lives online and shopping online, and so this new reservation system really allows them twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to, to see what Prairie Island has to offer and to, and to make their plans for vacation. To get a closer look at that map, we did reconfigure some of the sites on the electrical side, added a legend to clearly show all of the different features that Prairie Island Campground has to offer. Some other noteworthy pieces, something we added this year is we have a campfire, we hosted campfire concert series, in which the community was welcome to enter into Prairie Island Campground. And at one of the events, we counted about two hundred and fifty folks that came up in like an open house type environment. They came for the music, they saw what Prairie Island had to offer, and then left. We continue to offer what had been done in the past, you know, fun events like Christmas in July, Halloween, kids came trick-or-treating, and then continue to do golf cart parades, but really adding the component of bikes, because now that the folks are driving more slowly through the campground, it's really become a much more bike-friendly place. And then on the weekends, when the kids are there, with the help of an intern from Winona State, we did children's crafts and games, we even had a workshop on fermentation at the end of the year to celebrate the wrapping up of the garden. And then this year, that so much shows the collaboration between Front Porch Management and Boats and Bluegrass, we featured some of, some Boats and Bluegrass music up at the camp store prior to the event, prior to the festival. And as a, partially as a result, this year already, Boats and Bluegrass has sold seventy-five percent of their tickets that they sell for folks to come in early. They've sold her to camp on Wednesday night, right before the festival starts. They've already sold seventy-five percent of those tickets, so folks really appreciated the experience that they had leading up to the festival, and that really shows in the sale of those tickets so far. And then, as we talked about our partnership with Winona State in offering equipment rentals, watercraft, stand-up paddleboards, kayaks, canoes, the access to the backwaters there is pretty phenomenal. And so, from that, we had two hundred ninety-one single rentals of watercraft. And then also, we have an active transportation bike fleet, again, thanks, thanks to Ship Grant. This picture you can see, there's somebody on stand-up paddleboard, there's a motorboat, there's a kayak, so you can just see the interaction of all the different types of watercraft, right there at the point by the spillway. And then also, there's one of the new ADA docks that was installed this year. And there's the rental center, the short-term structure, first year. And here's some of the kid events. Deb McClellan did a helmet workshop with the kids, really teaching them the importance of safety, is in the arts and crafts projects. You know, a band setting up to play in the garden, you can see the gardens in full bloom, and some more music. And there you get a staff shot of the crowd, a draw for some of the campfire concert series. The Littlest Pair, an international band juke duo. The parade with the kids, I don't, you can't really see here, but they have lights on their bikes, it's all part of being safe in the campground. Campground parade. And some unique events, we have Halloween at the Plon House, that's scary. So Ship Grant, we, Ship Grant, with the Ship Grant, we're able to construct a community garden. In that community garden, we had over fifty volunteers, so we partnered with Riverway Community School, we partnered with Countdown College and St. Mary's University, as well as Winona Recovery Court, to get this garden off the ground. And it was a huge success, with gardeners from the campground itself, as well as the community. And from that, one of the community gardeners happened to be an artist as well, we had a blank canvas, you can kind of see in the background there, the fence was eventually painted as a mural, and the Prairie Island community donated the funds to support her efforts as an artist in the garden. So we have also a bike fleet, twelve cruisers, two burleys, two trikes. During, we didn't get the bike fleet until the end of the year, but at Boats and Bluegrass, the entire fleet was rented out for the weekend. Also, Jamie and Danny have developed a frisbee golf course, and during the week, it's surprising how many folks are out there throwing frisbee around when the, when the campground is empty. Some kids from Riverway, Kelly and Cardi helping with the fermentation festival, and there you can see the finished mural as a backdrop to the garden. One of our, the guy loves to come to the campground and just jump on the trike and go visit his friends, his bike fleet. Also, what's new this year is the development of group sites. So we have three group sites that have, this year they hosted the Winona State Warrior Expeditions, Carter Schools had an event there, the sixty-two students for the first time. They have five boy scout groups come through, girl scouts, and then also Oxford has a river semester, so they, as part of their up and down the river experience, they came to stay with us.
I get to jump into the things that are more like work and are quite as simple always, but they're exciting events, you know. They're exciting things that have happened. So, as many of you know, we've removed all the old pit toilets, they were all wooden structures, and I would, we're pretty certain, every single one of them needed to be removed. The tanks were leaking on them, there were definitely environmental issues with them. And from a customer service standpoint, they were, they're just notorious, the old ones, they just stunk so bad, so, and it was really not much you could do to, you know. We also got an ADA ready dock, and we'll talk about what that means by ready here in a little bit. And then the new storage shed that you see there, we built that in collaboration with Corbin Flom, came up and helped it. Corbin and I and Danny built that new shed for our equipment, and that obviously is greatly appreciated. So there you can see the fun part, it's very satisfying to watch an old toilet get smashed. And then, in addition to the right there, that tank is, appears to be an old boiler tank that was repurposed as a holding tank for one of the toilets. So you can, and it had a hole rusted in it, so you can see why it was definitely past due that that needed to be removed from the campground.
Especially great.
And there comes in one of our new ones. Those probably look familiar to many people at state parks and national parks, you see these, these are built out of solid pre-cast concrete, they also double as a storm shelter. And the three of those are by far the most substantial storm shelters we have out there. They are, that there was forty-two thousand pounds. And they're, they're designed to be in a flood zone as well, so it's, they're a perfect fit for out there. And these would actually be the same toilets, if you remember in your budget this year, that we had, we had to remove for this year's budget, but that's, we would like two more of those at Prairie Island, to handle the capacity that we need out there. And then, these are just some testimonials from people that, you know, afterwards our system sends us an email and says, you know, thank you for staying with us, if you have any comments, you know, please let us know. And these are some that really just right away have recognized that something is different this year, and that the city had been putting money back into it, and that it was just different in a good way to them, so we wanted to share those with you. So some opportunities for growth and development as Front Porch is we see it, and also some of our conversation with park staff is that, you know, the electric side runs at pretty good capacity throughout the year, there's a little room for more growth there, we've added a couple sites by knocking down some bathrooms, and we've added a couple sites that'll help us. But I think the biggest bit of growth that we can find out there as far as capacity is in that, that non-electric side of the campground. And some of the ways we, we see doing this is through programming. Some of the ideas we have, we like to create structured programs for families or for anybody to come, where we, we plan, you know, four hours of the day, want to go mountain biking one day, or rock climbing one day, canoeing and kayaking, so it's kind of a program-type stays for them. So people plan with their family, and the rest of the day, they, they recreate on their own or go into town and do things. Mostly special events like we're doing, some recreational things we get, we've talked about is maybe getting some types of races out there, you know, run bike road type stuff, or interpretive, nature interpretive events. Growth in regional outdoor effort is probably one of the biggest opportunities we see, if we can develop the, you know, mountain biking, hiking trails in the bluffs. For us, that brings the type of folk to town that are going to come out to Prairie Island Campground and camp, and they are going to recreate during the day, they're going to paddle, they're going to bike, they're going to do all those things, so, you know, we support strongly the development of more outdoor recreation opportunities in town. And then the biking connections to Prairie Island, making sure people can get there safely, or whatever other forms they get there, but search everything, making sure they find their way safely to Prairie Island, is a huge growth potential. And then just, you know, continuing to heighten the awareness of the recreating that we do have currently. And then we're going to get into Prairie Island's site amenity and facility improvements. Having spent the year out there as committees we did, we've definitely identified some things that, that we're going to talk about that I think are really important to maintaining that property and caring for it. The ashbore trees definitely are a big loss, and then the levee accreditation, just the mandate to have an easement at the bottom of the foot of all the levees has taken a whole nother set of tree, or group of trees out of the campground. So we definitely feel it's important, you know, as stewards of that land, that we need to come back in there right away in the spring, we need to get some more trees in the ground, because it's almost three hundred trees have gone away at the campground, which is a real significant amount. Some areas have been open right up, and now there's no shade now. Definitely, we've talked to the community out there, and there's a bunch of people willing to come and help us in the spring and do that as volunteers, so we're looking forward to that as well. And here's some facilities and amenities that we think can be, can happen out there, the tree planting we said, but these are going to be small-scale and river access docks. There used to be a lot, a lot more docks out of Prairie Island, they were owned by Russ, and they were high-maintenance docks, barrel docks, things like that. I think moving forward, we want lower-maintenance docks that are better, easier to get in and out of water, we don't flip barrels down the river, all those things. But there's a lot of people saying they really miss having the docks, so we can get some fishing docks down there, because it really goes a long way up, a lot of the folks have been coming there for a long time. So that's something we definitely want to look at. Entry signage, right now, there's an old sign down by the deer park that says you're at Prairie Island Campground. When you get to the front gates, people don't actually know that that's where to come in, because Google and some other things send them down to the Kiwanis Shelter, there's some issues, so I think we solved that with a really nice sign, just says, "Welcome to Prairie Island Campground, turn here." We also want to do some landscaping right there, that really welcomes right at that front entrance. We tried hard to make that whole front area feel like when you've arrived, you feel like you're, you know, it's a happy, it feels good when you enter the space, so more landscaping, some changing things there will be, make it a lot more welcoming. And more bathrooms, while those aren't small-scale, we already know how to do it, we've done it, everything's in place, so I think that's just a matter of deciding what the funds into them. Fish cleaning shack is old, so that's something that we at Front Porch could construct real easy, and that would be done. And then fire rings and picnic tables, they're getting old, many of them are, picnic tables are wore out, you know, we had to decommission a bunch, it's just time that we put some more of those into the campground. These are some projects, I think, in collaboration with the city, different departments here we can do internally, we don't have to go out for. So managing service water throughout the property, there's a lot of low spine, low line areas that hold water, whether it was floodwater, whether it's rainwater, that just make it not desirable if you have any weather at all when you're there. In addition, there's a lot of erosion issues that come from that, right along the river front, at the boat launch, at the beach. And I'm going to show you some pictures that'll probably be pretty eye-opening. And then the boat launch needs to be replaced. Large-scale shoreline restoration, we are getting pinched from the levee because of the mandate to move in, and the shoreline is eroding, going this way, and it's something that's going to become very real to us, not that far down the road, that's going to really start causing problems, and even from, yeah, there's a bunch of reasons for that. And that, that's a very large project that we're really, it's going to take some engineering, it's talking, but it is possible. New shower house and camp store facility. The shower house is twenty-five years old, it still serves us fairly well, but there's a lot of fixtures and things internally in that that are twenty-five years old, they're wore out, there's some mold issues, there's inadequate ventilation, there's some other things in that, in that building that are, could definitely be done a lot better, and it is certainly one of those things that makes a huge impression to people, whether they want to come back. Water, water heaters, things like that are definitely, you know, on their last leg. And then road resurfacing, the roads are in all kinds of good potholes. A guy told me today, he doesn't want to come back next year because there's too many potholes in the Brex's golf cart, but it's okay. Here's the beach. This happened at least six times this year, where what happens is there's water management runoff issue above it, it pools up and then runs over the beach, erodes all of our sand, and then we have to go back in, pull all that sand up, fill all these holes back in, and do all that work. That could be managed with some, you know, a little bit of design and just reshaping of that area, we could, we could manage this problem though quite easily. This is, you know, when I said we have an ADA ready dock, we have an ADA dock that goes right there, but the ramp, this is our approach to that ramp, and it is nowhere near ADA, it's actually a hazard, so that, that needs to be addressed. This is the other side of the boat launch, just to the right of what we're just looking at, this has been undermined by erosion, and it's broken the concrete out, and boats go in there and drop a tire in that hole if they don't know that they have to go to the other side. So that's, that's another piece, and you can see how we, we put cones out to prevent that, you know, do the best we can there. But that's an area that just, you know, over, it's been there a long time, nineteen eighty-three that boat launch was put in. And just not managing the water runoff causes a lot of that problem. This is what the river front looks like all the way from pretty much the snowway all the way, almost to the whole south down riverside of the campground. This all used to have soil over the top of it, so we've eroded all of that soil out of there. there and left with, I guess that's probably Franklin Street from a long time ago or something else, you know, somebody thought that might've, was a good idea at one point in time. I know engineering houses that that type of shoreline restoration is actually does more detriment than help, so. And again, just showing, excuse me, low lying areas where flooding water and rain sits in these low lying areas. This is premium riverfront sites. Anytime it rains, it holds water, nobody wants to put their tent there. So it's just another thing internally at the city, we can get filled, we can go in and grade that out and solve some problems. And those are all projects that we talked about and we, you know, hope to address here sooner than later. And then the camp store. It was originally, I believe, a pavilion and then they built block walls in to fill it in, the slab on gray, it doesn't have frost pudding or anything like that, so all the water drains right to the camp store. This is a downpour if the towels in the door don't flood the store. And then it runs water under the slab and it's a real humid building, it has plexiglass windows, you can't open them to air it, you know, it's not as like. So, so there's a number of things here and these are things that have worked, they've been used for a long time, but I feel that taking something like the camp store and the shower houses and maybe making a single building that's above flood plain makes a lot of sense in a space like this. We protect our investment by having it up higher, it's a lot more appealing to people coming in, it allows us to program and do a lot of other things that are challenging right now. This building floods at fifteen feet, the electrical starts getting affected, the building itself has to be completely scrubbed and painted and washed and all those things. So another thing that we, I think is really something we should take a look at is, you know, can we build a single footprint building, go up higher, bring the showers into the bath into it and have a nice welcoming facility where we could do, it could be a launching point for all kinds of recreation in this town, so. Those are just some of the things that you can see the position of the shower house to that camp store, how the shower house is built up over flood plain type, but. So I think it's important, we get to see kids down there, get to interact with a lot of the nature that a lot of kids don't get to see these days. This guy came walking through, I believe on Memorial Weekend. He was a beast and he didn't really care to stop for anybody, he just kept going, but the kids all chased him and watched him all the way to the water. Plenty of these guys around, this guy came into the camp store twice in a day. He just cruised by and came in and hopped right in. So it's just kinda, it's a really nice space for kids to engage and this little girl caught her first fish, which is a really cool thing, she was pretty darn happy with these though, so. There's a lot of great things going on down there, there's a lot of opportunity for growth and, you know, I hope moving forward we can, we can keep making it as close to be and be a really great part of the back end of the quarter. So thank you for listening to that longer than you probably wanted, two presentations tonight, but thank you.
Thank you for all the efforts you've put into it.
Doing a good job out there, thank you both.
Mayor Council, you have any questions at all for Jamie or Ann?
Al.
I have a number of questions. I think the camp store used to be called the McConan Pavilion, but that's my perspective because I'm old. But I had actually two folks who had camped this year, one local, one from Colorado, and they've all had very positive comments on the campground and are very appreciative of the improvements that you've made there. Do you have any demographics of your users? You know, where they're from?
I know we have them here tonight.
Okay.
We do have some.
You track them though? Okay, so you know what your target audience is?
We know locations where people are coming from, we do have, we do have some, it really depends on them putting that information in.
It's always handy to have anytime you do any kind of marketing and stuff to know.
We haven't put it into forced mode, which we can within the system, we can force them to say how many, how many childrens out there, how many dogs, all of that.
Yeah, nice to know from, you know, twenty miles from fifty miles.
I do, I do have that value, if you can get that to them.
Okay, no, that's, that's good to know, I'm glad you tracked it that, that's better than, you know, just doing it.
And if any, and I do, I can't email this, it'll be on form to anybody if they're interested in any information, so please feel free to request that from us.
Yes, yes. I understand about the water problems, it's been that way for a long time in a lot of the camp, a lot of the campground and may continue to be a problem, obviously, it's a flood plain forest, so. As we move into finding solutions for some of that, it would be good if we could find solutions that would also be educational for people, like how to manage, how to manage water and how to, how to safely get it into the, into the river without erosion and without all those problems. So making it an educational presentation as well would be cool.
We're all about it.
Okay.
I just wanna say thank you, from your presentation that you made to us when you were selected, I, I could tell that you were gonna be good, but you embraced the park and really did far more than I expected in a first year, so I'm very pleased that you took this on and are willing to continue to do so. And I know from what else that and from what my experience with visitors has been that it's been a much better experience for people, so thank you. You make the city look good when you do stuff like that and we appreciate that.
Yeah, I just, I'll echo that and also I know a number of the musicians who performed, even though I wasn't able unfortunately to make any of those events, I did go to Boats and Bluegrass, but they said they really enjoyed it and were really impressed with the numbers and the people that came out. And so it seems like it's a really good opportunity for musicians and I, I would encourage you to continue that. I guess I, I would like to see personally, and I probably have mentioned this before, to see some of the, the revenue gains that come from one of the very few places we have in the community for, that the city has that generates revenue to, besides our taxpayers, to, to go back to our parks and, and infrastructure improvement. And so I'll just make that, state that publicly here. I also am wondering if, now that we have bikes, I know that there is a semi quasi mountain bike trail out there and I'm wondering if we have plans on, on developing that that would be an additional attraction for campers, so that's it, thank you, good work.
I know that in the comp plan, it talks about a master plan for Prairie Island, I think that would be a great opportunity to design, you know, spec things into there, so I look forward to hopefully seeing that master plan for that area.
George, you had something?
Yeah, just, you know, again, like I say, very, very good job for your first year, it seems like you take ownership of it and I think there's been a lot more accomplished that you've done, I think that probably any of us thought here that would have been done in the first year or so. You're certainly doing your end and we have to continue to keep our end going that way, so. And I know your professionalism of both you folks is very, very well, so thank you, job well done.
Any other questions, Steve?
Just wanna thank you for embracing the partnership and working with the city and the staff, appreciate staff's efforts as well. Have you reached out to John Howard yet about some of those issues?
John should've been on my list.
Okay, I just wanna make sure you guys are talking. He's pretty good at finding grants and whatnot for, so maybe we can tackle some of that erosion issues and come up with some, some environmental ways of dealing with it. I think we got plenty of sand.
I heard the Army Corps is looking for places to park some, so.
Yeah, so careful what you wish for.
I know where you can get some, it's close by.
Yeah, no kidding, they have a lot there.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you, we look forward to continuing, great things out there.
And moving on to new business, item five point one is to extend the cable TV franchise agreement with Charter Communications for one more six month term.
I make a motion to adopt the attached resolution again, just like.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion, Al?
Yeah, I support this, but I'm just curious about, last meeting we approved a name change for the, the entity known as Charter to go to Spectrum. I assume this would go along and not be an issue technically to process this change, this extension, okay?
And you promise this is the last six month extension?
No.
How many years now?
We'll put it under old business. We, we have been making some, some progress and, but who knows? It's, it's really hard to, the community came together really well as we were going through our needs analysis. I think we've identified a lot of things that we can do as a community, we can close this deal with them and have the resources to, to make the changes that we need. One of them certainly is in this room and making this a better environment for folks at home, but also people that want the council and folks that are visiting us as well.
Well, thank you for staying with it, Monica.
All right, anything else? We'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Item five point two is the fire department, part-time firefighters retention and incentive system.
I make a motion to approve the attached resolution, a second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Chief?
Mayor Council, our part-time program's been in the works since nineteen ninety-two. The, the current retention incentive program's been active since nineteen ninety-five. The city back then decided to go with this type of system in lieu of a relief pension system, which is probably more uncommon in today's world. And this system's been updated twice in the last twenty-five years and I did a little research just to find out what our comparable cities and other departments are doing as far as a financial commitment to their part-time firefighters and volunteers. And what I found, it's, it's right around the five to seven thousand dollar range that other departments are doing. So I, I thought it was perfect that maybe we adjust our numbers to reflect our comparables. So currently if you look at the chart, you see where our existing system, where our numbers lay and I'm proposing new numbers to the right just to kinda catch up to, to our other counterparts throughout the state. Yeah?
No, thank you. Chief, the, the real problem is of course that you train your part-timers so well that they are very hireable. I mean, you train them well, because I've rented to several of them who get picked up by these bigger fire departments.
Yes.
And I'm not gonna suggest that you under-train them, but I just think, I mean, I'm not opposed to this, but I think it's, it's just that they're, they are, they get the training they need, so they're, they are wanted.
We, we are probably currently staffing an entire station in Madison, Wisconsin.
That's what I, and I know some of the cities in Rochester as well.
Yes, and, and we lose them to Rochester and to Duluth and it, it, it's a vicious circle and.
You can't really blame them for wanting to be full-time firemen, but.
My brother-in-law's the chief and the new chief in Rochester and I've asked him to include training money in his budget for us since we're.
That's what I was gonna suggest, can we just ask Rochester?
He laughed, yeah.
They, they do want your, they do want your firemen.
Yes, and, and we really, really do have highly trained part-timers, which is, you know, really kudos to city council because we have the funding to do that. It's, it's a vicious circle as far as keeping them and retaining them for any length of time, because it's a financial commitment that the city puts forward for the part-timers between training and turnout gear, equipment and, and so forth, so. Big picture wise, we, we wouldn't be able to do our jobs without the part-time program with our current staffing levels. They're a vital part of what we do day in, day out and, you know, I'm hoping with these numbers will promote people to stick around a little bit longer than they normally do. We'll, we'll see, so.
Okay, Al?
Are you, are you finding, I think I'm kind of inferring or you're inferring that there is, you're seeing an increased turnover in the part-time staff?
Yes, and, and you could maybe blame it on the economy, I, I think that plays a part. I hate to say that we have a really good reputation and we lose them to full-time fire departments continually, so we have a lot of turnover in the part-time programs.
Has, has staff or your staff ever looked at a relief pension system for part-timers? And the cost is significantly higher than this?
It's, it's, it's normally, and it's reflective of that five to seven thousand dollar range that I mentioned.
Okay.
The, the unique thing and the benefit to the program that we have currently, it's, it's easy to maintain and, and we don't have to tie up finance as far as managing.
A lot of regulations from what I've seen anyway, these kinds of things.
Correct, yep, this is simple, it's clean, the part-time firefighters enjoy getting paid early.
I was gonna say, I bet they like to get the cash.
That's a, that's a, that's a true bonus, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
The other issue with retention is a lot of departments in the cities that were, especially in the suburbs, that were strictly volunteer in the past, they're going to having full-time staffing. We lost one to Cottage Grove recently.
Correct.
And they went from having just a very bare bones crew full-time to having full station. So as that changes, it opens up a lot more opportunities, whereas before our firefighters had to look outside the state often to get a full-time job.
Absolutely. And, and something we are gonna definitely have to look at in the near future is staffing levels. We're having a harder and harder time maintaining the part-time program and I know nobody wants to hear that, but the state of Minnesota is currently, I think, ranked forty-six in the country for firefighting expense per capita based throughout the country, so we, we don't compare very well with our, our surrounding states. What we use for numbers, typically the United States Fire Administration uses one full-time firefighter per thousand. Wisconsin is two point two fire, full-time firefighters per thousand. And it's kinda interesting, La Crosse Fire actually might have more full-time firefighters than Rochester. So it, it all kinda depends upon where you sit statewide. And what we're seeing in the state that, that's now affecting us, that really wasn't an issue up until about three, four years ago, the volunteer side's really kinda taking a backseat to maybe what it was years ago. And I think the state has always depended upon the volunteer side for firefighting and that's kinda falling out per se. So we're seeing a lot of departments in the metro going to full-time firefighters just because they, they can't get the staffing, so.
How many full-time firefighters do we have?
We currently have twenty-one.
George, I think you had a question.
Yes, thank you. I had a chance to visit with the chief on this matter. Now you were a charter member of the part.
I was, I was part of the very first part-time.
Yeah, a charter member of, of the part-time program.
Yeah.
And then I had the opportunity, I think I was the second group coming in.
Yeah.
In a comparison now, Kurt made it to chief and I found my way on the city council. So, two good promotions, right? Like, you know, like with the part-time program, which I had an opportunity for a short time to be in there, I mean, you know, it's a commitment. I mean, you know, if you're a part-timer, you are, you know, you're giving up a lot of things, your weekends and things for training and your calls and all that. I totally support what we're doing here this evening, but as far as people leaving, now I know probably when you came in and I came in, every applicant was a city of an owner resident, damn near everyone.
Yes.
And now, as far as these people that come in, of course it's less and less now, how many of these applicants are city of an owner residents? Maybe I'm, maybe I'm from Cottage Grove. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm from Cottage Grove. So I'm, I'm, I find my way to Winona for school or something, I get in there. Or maybe I'm from Madison, wherever it may be, and all of a sudden, a full-time job opens up. I'm already trained, hey, I'm going to go back home.
Yeah, and, and currently, one of the other caveats for the part-timers that hopefully gets them to stick around a little bit is we hire all our full-timers from that part-time staff. So that's another incentive to, to, to be a part-timer. We currently have a twenty-minute response time. So they theoretically don't have to be Winona citizens, they could live in a city good view. We're currently hiring eight part-timers that are taking physicals tomorrow. And I believe three of them are, live outside the city of Winona. So it's not quite half, but it's a significant number, so.
Michelle?
So actually, right now, we're below the number of full-time, because you said one per thousand.
We, we are for full-time.
Right.
So the, the beauty of the part-time program is they usually use three to seven part-timers per thousand or volunteers. So the city of Winona's always used five. So you, you allow me fifteen to thirty part-time staff, which gets us to that number. But the problem we're having is keeping that number.
Well, if you'd have more turnover in your department, you could keep some of those.
And it's getting tougher and tougher and tougher to get qualified applicants in the first place. We're kind of really finding ourselves in what the rest of the state's been dealing with for years, so. But it's, it's something we truly need to talk about, hopefully in the near future. I, I think if we would hire three additional firefighters, it would, it would take less pressure off the, the part-time program and maintaining numbers. But that, different discussion.
Nice try, Chief.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the chief? I have a motion, ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Chief, I have one other quick update since he was here. Talk about some training that the department just went through. And also remember, you were ISO two certified.
Correct.
And one of only two departments in the entire state. The other one is St. Paul, which doesn't have any part-timers, so.
Yeah.
We're, we're performing quite well.
We're doing well. Um, the fire department just completed NIMS three hundred mid-October. And just a little bit of background on that. NIMS is the National Incident Management System. And this was created after nine eleven.
That's right.
They had a federal commission kind of scope out the actual response to nine eleven, both in New York and at the Pentagon. And they came up with Short Falls and so forth. And they created NIMS in two thousand and three based off of recommendations. So all state, county, city officials need to be NIMS certified. There currently is a one hundred, a two hundred, a three hundred, a four hundred, a seven hundred, and an eight hundred class, NIMS class. So currently, we have the entire fire department certified, one, two, three, seven, and eight. And next week, we take the four hundred. So we'll have the entire fire department certified in all NIMS compliant classes, which is kind of a rarity. Typically, it's just chiefs that have this. But the thought process was, it was a class that we got through a federal grant, so it was free. Costs us a little bit of money on overtime, but we've positioned the city for about the next twenty years being compliant. And the carrot with feds with NIMS is if we did have a major event, federal reimbursement money is based off certification. So we, we're good to go. That was kind of the thought process, so.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is item five point three. It's the change of fee for solar permits.
Make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
Second. Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item five point four is an agreement between the city and Borzakowski Toing for toing for the inspections department.
I make a motion to authorize the city manager to keep the agreement.
Second. Motion by Michelle and seconded by Al. Discussion?
As I alwa, as I always do, I am Borzakowski, not Borkowski, so.
I almost did it for you, George.
I almost did too.
I didn't want to take it from you.
There'll be other opportunities.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
And item five point five is the Community Roadside Landscape Partnership Program with St. Mary's University.
I make a motion to approve the attached resolution and accept the three attachments.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al.
Paul, no.
Okay.
I have Paul.
Paul.
I have one tonight, so that's all.
All right, Paul, Paul's second.
Do we have someone from St. Mary's here?
Would you like to address this?
Don't want to put him on the spot.
State your name and address, please.
Uh, John Scholmeyer, fiscal plan director at St. Mary's University. The state's an interesting group of people to work with. We have low-rent consultants that need a lot of help. Owned by the university, on city property, with the state easement. We have discussion with the state, with the city. Yep, it's very straightforward. The state will send down their planning engineers, deal with our back exit. They will pay for their project with the partnership. They cannot partnership with the university, they have to partnership with the city. I've talked with others already. Basically, university's asking the city to sign these papers, send it to the state. State will come down and engineer this, will work with the city, the three, three compliance, three groups in this. University will, I can change hands of the decision, so. Again, all work with the city and the others. Seems to be a kind of a no-brainer. I'm here to see if you got any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Scholmeyer?
Al first? I'm just curious about a timeline. If the timeline, what the timeline would be between approval and installation?
Well, when the university gets a letter, the letter goes to the state, and the process starts. People from the state, their back up anywhere from six to eighteen months. How soon will this go forward?
Right, anybody's guess right now, okay.
Someday.
Probably after I'm retired.
Just curious, I mean, it sounds like a good program, I'll vote for it obviously. And, and, you know, it would be nice to know when people will see those changes in that area.
So as this goes forward in the planning stages, the, the city would be involved in all aspects of it. I, I believe we got a good relationship, hopefully the city believes we got a good relationship about how things are going forward. We got a couple neat things going up in the Ice Valley, but making snow when the city participates in that are pretty excited with some of the younger guys, which one that old group that's making snow. So this is just one more and, and step to have a good relationship.
Hey, Paul?
Sure, I, I don't get a chance to ask family members questions or council change too often, but here goes. So with the landscaping that you're thinking of doing, we have an intersection of a road that's not utilized very often and a bike trail that the, where they cross is right at the foot of a hill. Bikes come screaming down the hill, I know, because I'm one of them. And I'm just wondering if there will be additional vehicular traffic that will possibly be interacting with those bicyclists? And if some of the landscaping will improve or worsen the sightlines for cyclists that would see any of that traffic or vice versa?
Those questions are, have been brought up. The, the plan that the university proposes is to take the stop sign and we look forward portion of the road. Also to take down the bad pine trees so that sightline does. The back gate for the university emergency only usage or construction. So it should be very minimally used. But, I mean, again, one of the intents of this program is to make the sightline for the bike to come down. Hopefully, the bike could slow down when it come down that hill.
Hopefully. Thank you.
Any other questions? Now, we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item seven point one is council concerns.
We'll start with Al.
Uh, just one thing, happy Hanukkah.
Good, thank you.
That's right.
Michelle?
I have nothing.
Pam?
Nothing tonight.
Paul?
Oh, gosh. Uh, okay, so, um, chief, you're still here. I have, I'm wondering if it's possible, our, our snow guys, the plows are doing a great job. I'm wondering if it's possible if they could, on West Burns Valley Road there, plow the snow to the ditch rather than to the residential side? There aren't any homes in the ditch side, but they're still plowing it over to the residential side, so. Seems like not too much work to do, I don't know. And then I'll just hold off on the whole Highway forty-three speed increase for a different time. But I do want to express my condolences to the Streeter family, who lost another sibling this year, the second this year. Wes Streeter passed a week ago. And, and Wes is known for his, uh, producing musical productions in, in Winona and other communities, and not to mention bringing large national acts to, to Winona in the seventies and, and eighties. And just want to offer my condolences to the family.
Thank you. George?
Thank you. I would just like to simply pass on condolences to the Tom Kusadowski family, known as TK. He passed away here last week. He started out as a young man and employee at Gorman Foundry. Eventually became the owner of it. Great outdoorsman, very, very protective of wildlife and everything else out there. And if you've seen Tom in a store, the fish were not biting, because you would see him out on the river. A fixture out there every day, so, great businessman, great contributor to the city of Winona and to his wife and son George and the rest of their siblings. Condolences on the passing of a very, very good man. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there's one item, the approval of the minutes from November nineteenth.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourned.